I'm going to call the order of the regular meeting of the Jefferson School Committee, January 6th, 6:00 PM. Full call, Andy Burnier, he's not here yet, myself, Wayne, Maria, Adam, administrative Janet, Laura, Todd, Peter joining.
I thought he was going to be, but I don't see him.
Peter's not here yet, maybe, maybe he might show up. And can we stand for the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda today?
Yeah, we've got two resignations that I'm just going to share with you. We do that on a communications correspondence, I added it after public comment.
Okay. And then, public comment, I had two people sign up today, Sedge, just in order of signup. You are on, public comment.
What I wanted to say was that I've come to the last few meetings and I've been to other meetings in the past years, different boards. I think you run a nice meeting and all that sort of stuff. You talk about things that seem to be important at the time. One thing that never gets talked about is, to me, is the students, how they're doing where we are. And now, if you go online, there's a website, a school website, and I can't think that I have it listed, but it shows all the schools in the state. And what it shows for Jefferson, in the last three years, it's been just a steady decline in levels of proficiency in math, English, and science. And, you know, I can give all of you a copy of that, but it just seems like things aren't going well when the kids come out of here and show that where they are and their understanding of these topics. I'm a taxpayer, everybody here. This past fall, we had the election. I was involved in some of that, going around in different homes, you know, talking about the issues. And one of the number one topics that came up was what is going on in Jefferson School? I pay a lot of taxes, my taxes just went up. Everybody says it's because of the school, what's going on? And so, people are concerned. I just don't know, I'm not expecting you guys to answer all this tonight, but I think it's, I think it's something that needs to be addressed somehow. And I'm not really necessarily, like, the school board should end up this. The administration should have done that, but somewhere in that classroom, kids aren't getting the education that they seem to be, seem to be, should have by the time they get out of here, at least in the jar. And I just, that's my, that's my concern. And I have copies of where I got these figures from, I can hand them out if you're low. You can use that, and I'm thinking next month, maybe, we could address that somehow.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And then Sloan?
Yes, and I honestly, when I signed that, it was more that I thought that I could vocalize and I can get if and when it was appropriate. But again, this is my first school board meeting. I do have a child here at Jefferson and two more that I hope to be future students here at Jefferson. So far, our experience has been pretty positive, really. My thing that I have been upset about this year has been the fact that our fabulous music teacher is no longer here. And it seems like the program is lacking some. And then, when my son was coming home telling me that they colored for PE, I started getting really upset. And I was like, okay, I need to do something. So that is what's prompted my presence. But yeah, I am not, well, research more, how do I know what I'm doing? So I'm just here to start to become a part of this, but those are some concerns of mine.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have a couple of presentations this afternoon, evening. So Ari, are you ready for yours, or do you still need time? Because we can swap them around.
Did you want to add this to the agenda too?
So for anybody who doesn't know me by name, I'm Ari, I'm a social worker. I've been here for eight years now, and I'm just going to do a presentation on trauma-informed classrooms within schools, which is, I think, really important right now. And it's something that I've provided to teachers recently and would like to do more within the school. I'm going to share sort of a renewed version of that. Okay, so as I said, this is about trauma-informed classrooms. And when we talk about trauma-informed work, we're talking specifically about trauma, but also ACEs. And ACEs are very important to understand as adverse childhood experiences. They're defined as potentially traumatic events that occur in childhood, and they can include things such as violence, abuse, growing up in a family with mental health or substance abuse, problems, divorce, conflict, community violence beyond, you know, natural disasters and such. And they're important because the stress from ACEs for some kids can change brain development and then affect how the body responds to stress. This is linked to health problems, mental illness, substance abuse in adulthood. They can be prevented, but it's also really important to understand that children who live in poverty are much more likely to experience ACEs. And ACEs translates often to trauma. So the APA, which is the American Psychological Association, defines trauma specifically as "an emotional response to a terrible event like an accident, crime, natural disaster, physical or emotional abuse, neglect, experiencing or witnessing violence, death of a loved one, war, and more. And immediately after the event, shock and denial are typical, but then longer-term effects set in." And so, there's emotional reactions that are continued and long-term that can result in unpredictable emotions, flashbacks, difficult relationships. And we see a lot of physical symptoms such as headaches, nausea, rashes, things like that. And as I said before, trauma is a result of ACEs. Not every child is going to develop trauma from ACEs. There's key factors contributing to different levels of effects of ACEs and trauma on kids. And really, it has to do with resilience and access to resources. But just as part of understanding what those types of trauma can be, again, natural disasters, hurricanes, fires, floods, fires, not floods, just, you know, wildfires, but a house burning down, human-caused disasters, accidents, wars, environmental disasters, acts of terrorism, community violence, like community health problems, shooting, assault, gang-related violence, that's obviously more urban areas, hate crimes, group trauma affecting a particular community. And school violence, so threats within schools, fights within schools, threats of school shootings or school shootings, bullying, loss of a student, that student moving, or death, a serious illness, and the same for a staff member. Family trauma, so we're talking about abuse, neglect, witnessing violence, physical, emotional, having family members that are arrested, incarcerated, substance abuse, immense sudden loss, medical trauma, pain, injury, invasive medical procedures, this can be for themselves or for others, what they witness around them. And poverty, so that lack of resources, lack of support networks, no mobility, meaning it could be a physical mobility, but really, we're talking more in terms of like, there's no way to access resources even far away. So there's no vehicles, no bribes, community supports that might provide those things, financial stress or some kind of business. So why do we talk about it, looking at statistics? One in seven children who experienced child abuse are neglecting the past year. So 25% of American children experience at least one traumatic event by age 16. Studies show that 34.8 million children in the US, this is under 18, are exposed to ACEs. And exposure to six or more ACEs can lower a person's life expectancy by nearly 20 years. And then, depending on how these traumatic experiences are defined, we look at 8% to 12% of Americans having experienced one sexual assault, 9% to 19% experiencing physical abuse by a caregiver or physical assault, and then 38% to 70% witnessing serious community violence. More witnessing violence between caregivers, 1% to 10%. One in five students who have lost a family member or friend to homicide, 9% of experiences can consist of victimization. And 20% to 25% have been exposed to a natural, maybe, disaster. So exposure to multiple types of victimization, so we're saying, you know, they've, they're in poverty, they, they, they experience death, they witness abuse. It's very common, we're 20% to 48% of all, 21% of our experience multiple exposure. These are really big numbers and are really important to be aware of. So we look at, I like this illustration. If you look at the numbers throughout the country, throughout region, when you, when it's, it's broken down by race, but these numbers are really the same no matter where you look. So ACEs and trauma are really pervasive, and they're happening everywhere. And so, you look at New England, and there's 22% just for, for, you know, white students, 24% Mid-Atlantic, 22% South Atlantic, they're, it's very similar. Okay, so it's like, we want to pay attention no matter where we are because it's happening in a lot of places. And then, we look at, in Maine, one in five students has reported to have two or more ACEs. Slightly higher than the national average for the last study that was done, CDC-reported data. So then JBS, so look at our numbers, like, how does this affect us? What is the aim, aren't we talking about trauma? Why isn't it important for teachers or staff to understand ACEs and trauma? Well, there's about 240 students of JBS. Give or take, you know, these change, obviously. Same with the numbers below, what, 71 or so students are receiving special education services. And 36% of JBS's student population is considered economically disadvantaged. We look at that number because we know that ACEs is really highly correlated with poverty. And in our special education services, not all of those students, some of those students certainly do receive support due to trauma and experiences that they've had. So what does trauma look like? And really, I'm trying to focus on what you're going to see within a school. And we do see this here. So we see physical symptoms such as headaches, stomachaches, or appetite, and decline in self-care. And this is really, you know, characterized by multiple visits, frequent visits to the nurse's office. Intense feelings of fear and anxiety or concern for their safety. It really just doesn't make sense in that situation, but you've got a little kid who's complaining about things that they're afraid of, or they react really strongly in fear to something. Difficulty identifying how they're feeling, right? They can't even tell you. And they really struggle to control their emotional reactions. It's quick, and it's big, and it's can be very explosive at times, right? This is because trauma and ACEs all is, has neurobiological effects, a fight-or-flight response. Sure, y'all know about that, you know? They're living in this every day. This is how they get through a day. It's fight or flight, it's how do I survive? What works for me, what doesn't? And so, you see some of these responses. The angry or aggressive outbursts, withdrawal from peers and adults. It's this more often with older kids. Tendency to engage in risk-taking behaviors, usually older kids. Trouble trusting adults and peers. They misread social cues, react to things that are not meant to harm them or cause them to feel defensive. And they have a really hard time building relationships, kids, younger, older, and adults around them. We see through academics, difficulty paying attention and learning, really tired students, kills that fall asleep at their desks, thrown out, more time out of the classroom spent because they need three days breaks, they're in the nurse's office, maybe they're in trouble. Increased isolation, so withdrawing, older kids especially, you see this withdrawing, sort of a self-protection. Absences start to rise. We see more suspensions or expulsions based on behaviors, higher referral rates to special education, and then poor test scores with an increased risk of failing rates. And, you know, those things occur because if there's not a lot of support at home, it's hard for follow-through, right? And then here, they're tired, they're trying to survive on a basic level. The ability to connect to the need for academics, and why does this, why is this important to me? How does this help me? That's really a challenge for them, it's just not there. They're more interested in like, how am I getting food today? How am I staying warm? You know, who's going to yell at me today, that kind of stuff. So they get triggered, they get triggered in the school, you know? It's really hard to tell what kinds of things might trigger them, but they react as if the traumatic event is happening. This is that fight or flight. They may respond in ways to something very simple, like a teacher might ask them to try harder on something or try again, right? And then, all of a sudden, they're super escalated, or maybe they're hiding under a desk, or, you know, it's confusing. It doesn't make sense, like, why is this going on? So with kids, we see a lot of triggers as ACEs and trauma are at play for loud noises. Being touched can actually be a trigger. Threatening gestures that they see, authority figures, just being somebody in authority, and we're not talking about a police officer, but like a teacher, that can be threatening. Chaos or uncertainty, so changes in schedules, you know, things like that, that they don't see coming. Spaces witnessing violence between others, peers fighting, there's some of the trauma stuff that can occur to kids. It's not necessarily physical, but emotional. Emergency vehicles, smells, and particular times of years. This is really, I see this a lot, Thanksgiving, Christmas. So they have these triggers, they respond. What are the responses? So there's, there's fight responses, yelling, swearing, posturing, aggressive behavior. Fight responses, running away, refusing to talk, avoiding whatever it is. It could be avoiding a person, but often, it's avoiding task. Not going to do that, not going to engage, not going to finish it. For older kids, immediate substance use. Breathing responses, spacing out, hearing numb, disconnected, confused, or unresponsive. You can see this is looking tired too. So trauma doesn't just affect the schools as far as the kids who are in it, experiencing trauma and ACEs, but it also has an impact on the whole environment. So staff can feel this because when you're managing this and it's happening a lot, there's increased anxiety. You're tired, it's hard to focus, you know? You have trouble regulating your own emotions, maybe. Difficulty managing responses to students and parents, especially those who are in more of a fight place. Diminished capacity to maintain positive teacher-student, teacher-student relationships. Maybe, you know, attendance and work performance goes down. So then, you know, within the building, we see this major risk reform, decrease in academic achievement, decreased test grades, attendance, negative impact on school culture, climate has begun to, adults can be more reactive, controlling and punitive in their approaches to students because they're escalating. This disruptive behavior causes, you know, a perception that the student is acting out on purpose, that they can control this. So like, if I control you, then that will be controlled and this will stop. But it actually increases the negative response. It's, it's all the primitive functioning within the brain. And then, there's compounding issues that we have to figure out how to manage within the schools as staff, which can contribute to more of that feeling of stress that we have managing some behaviors and responses. But, you know, parents, it's, stress, ACEs and trauma is generational at this point. Talk about generational poverty, poverty connections, that's now through generations. So we might be also really struggling to figure out how to connect with a parent who's experiencing trauma and really reactive. There can be fear of other system involvement that can make our jobs hard to do. Situations trigger feelings of helplessness, you don't know what else to do, you just start to give up, what are we supposed to do? And lack of resources is really huge. I mean, how do you manage something that feels really big if you feel like you're struggling to find support or resources? Even in just for the families that are experiencing these adverse effects. There are very few community resources anymore. Mental health treatment is very, very hard to access outside of the environment of a school where it's built in. It got built in as a social worker. But if you wanted to get clinical social work care outside of school, it'd probably take a year, two years. I mean, and then, you might have a really hard time finding somebody who's trained to really address the treatment needs. So we absorb that here, and then, it's really, so this is why trauma training is really important to think about. You know, a lot of Maine is rural. We are lacking a lot of community supports, and it's really changed a lot in the last five to seven years. I mean, I've seen things just disappear. A lot of my cohorts in the clinical social work realm are just not doing the work anymore, they're burning out. And so, we think about, you know, there's high prevalence of this, ACEs, trauma, and it impacts us. It impacts student learning and behavior. So trauma-informed approaches are really important, and how we, how we commit to that and provide that as a school. And so, the universal response is that, you know, school staff members recognize and understand student responses to trauma and practices that support healing and resilience. This is embedded into the school. This can be stressful because it might require, you know, changes to practices, policies, and culture. And we have to look at, how do we get that support for students when the support is hard to find? And encourage partnerships with community organizations to ensure needed resources are available. And that's really reaching out, like in Jefferson specifically, is, we're a little bit isolated here. So how do we get, you know, folks that are set up in places like, you know, maybe Rockland or Brunswick? Or how can we connect to that and try to get some support from some of those folks? And so, there's more information about how to become a trauma-sensitive school, but it really is built around professional development, being sensitive to trauma within schools, really understanding what these kids are going through. And it's not an excuse, it's not, behavior is not an excuse. And so, you're not saying, oh, it's okay that you just did X, Y, and Z, and, you know, potentially, maybe, you know, hurt somebody else or had this big blow up disrupted the classroom. But you learn how to approach that behavior a little differently than through that strict disciplinary action that often continues to trigger these kids. And can de-escalate and get them, you know, re-engaged. And so, some of that involves the social-emotional skills, evidence-based programs, your guidance programs, your curriculums, your school-wide programs that everybody's really buying into and providing, and nurturing relationships. So the connections are really important. You know, you may not make all the difference in the world, but you can make some difference. And if you can connect to some of these kids and start to teach them about positive relationships, increase their feelings of safety, build resilience, resilience is really key, then you're likely to see a reduction in some of those trauma responses. And so, that's what we're talking about. So that's the end of my presentation. You know, I'm happy to share other information or, you know, questions later on, but the goal is just to really help folks understand what's going on with youth, the challenges they're facing, especially, you know, these rural areas, and start to think about why it's important to be aware of that and what we can do to try to change some of these and reduce the impact it has on all of us.
Thanks.
Do any of the board members have any questions?
That was a good presentation. Very curious what Jefferson is doing in that area. Are we moving forward in the area of getting our staff the training they need? Are we?
We're going to talk about that tonight, I think, aren't we, with the calendar? Yeah, yes.
We have another presentation by Debra Scott. You're on.
Did you know you were presenting?
You said you wanted every, you said you wanted every school board. Oh, then you can pass, don't worry, it won't bother anyone if you pass on the presentation.
So I'm a junior deputy for the county sheriff's office. But I've been, I've had a really good opportunity to work with the folks, about real schools. I got eight, twelve schools, and I do, much of my time is, you know, spent with dealing with situations within school. And you're also not enough time just being there. My most fun days are the driving with the deputies. But again, the board should really know what a job that the staff here does. You know, I was at a school board meeting the other night. Schools that I do commit to that have issues, they deal with them and they deal with them incredibly well. You know, the times that they will ask for guidance from sheriff's office, it's, they were on point for asking that and getting that from us. And again, this is a position that the sheriff just created this year, or I'm sorry, in March of '24. And it has just been, I think, it's been a great partnership, you know, that we've had. But again, I see the staff that's doing the work, some of the things you do, a lot of the things you're talking about. It's a challenge for staff to be able to deal with it, and they deal with it incredibly well, I would say, absolutely. So, but the other things too, so I mentioned some of the trainings you're talking about. Child CIT, which is crisis intervention training, happens in those. But they actually have one for children as well, so I've been to that one. And that was been, that was an eye-opener for me, placing the teen brain, getting to know and understand how the kids are reacting to the things, especially the ACEs, you know? I know that when I took the ACEs, you know, I had a pretty high number, you know? So it, it, the challenges, I think, that it's not just Jefferson, it's not. Again, I'm in eight different schools, and it is, it is across the board with all the schools that the kids are. Different challenges than we had when we were growing up, I absolutely believe that, you know? There's different things, the stresses that these kids have. And again, I go back to the staff and how they help you mitigate things and just deal with it is, you know, they're, you guys are on track with, you know, with dealing with so much that you guys do. But, I mean, you know, But I mean, uh, you know, I've been having a blast doing this tonight. I was here just as a Jill citizen, but always try to be prepared, you know. But, you know, again, Jefferson's been doing a fantastic outstanding job. Anyone has any questions for me?
Thanks.
South Bristol, 5:30 tomorrow. Noble Borough, on the 13th, 5:30. Thank you. And it's great, you know, I chimed in, I think, when you chatted down at Bristol too. Just the opportunity that, um, having a resource officer now, we'd love to have him every day if we could. And it could be certainly warranted. But just the fact that we can have law enforcement come in and interact with students, I have always found that it to be so beneficial because a lot of times the only interaction that students have with law enforcement is negative. At their, their age, and it's usually something to do with parents or a guardian or something like that. So they already come to us with this, this mindset that of law enforcement. So the opportunity to come in, have those lunches, and I think I also mentioned at Bristol, I encourage any law enforcement agency that's in our area to just pop into our schools, just to come in and, and walk through the schools and get a, first of all, get a lay of the land so they'll know if in case they ever do have to arrive in a, an unfortunate situation and that they know where they're going. But secondly, it's just interact with kids in a way that maybe they haven't been interacting with the law enforcement before. And it's, I've found that to be extremely positive. So that's certainly something I want to continue here. So I appreciate all the stuff you do above and beyond the enforcement of things.
Thanks. Moving on. Action on minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting on December 2nd? No second? All in favor?
Uh, this is where I think you want, probably want to slide in your communications and correspondence. Janet has a couple to share.
I'm gonna slide that in for you.
Yeah, glad you can share them right now. We'll move it here.
Terms of resignations. Randy, I think his last name is, I don't bring his name, sorry. Is retiring. He's gonna work through August. And he wanted to give us plenty of notice that he is going to end this time here, Jefferson. He'll certainly be missed. Really knows the school, the needs here, works great with you and with me and students and staff. So he will be greatly missed, but he's giving us lots of time to find a new placement. So announce that, that everybody has plenty of time to get ready for Randy leaving us in August. The other is Ashley, the special education teacher, has also resigned from the position here. And we're actively advertising and doing what we can in order to replace that position and working on, but I hope the temporary plans in order to meet the needs of students here.
Thanks, Janet. On the chair's report, the next regular meeting of the school board will, uh, to be determined. I know Todd has some stuff that he wants to talk to us about, some resuming some meetings across the district. So do you want to do that now? Or do you want to wait?
I'll wait.
Okay. Um, the next meeting of the AOS board will be January 8th.
And we're gonna have to add one special one on the 14th, which Wayne isn't even aware of yet.
Okay.
Um, so I'll be sending out an email to them later this afternoon, but we are gonna, we have to meet on the 8th to go to get guidance from the board on the budget. Cause as we get in, as Wayne will probably report out here in a minute about the budget vote. So we'll need to get guidance from them Wednesday night. Then we'll have to go back, make some whatever adjustments they've requested and then bring it back to them for them to adopt. So we will have to have a meeting on the 14th as well.
Okay. Um, the AOS 93 public budget vote did happen on December 18th, 2024. That budget did not pass. So there is another budget vote on January 22nd, if I'm correct.
You are.
And that is at Noble Borough.
Correct.
Um, and Wayne, I'm gonna let you kind of take over and go over an AOS 93 report if you got one.
Well, it's pretty much it. At our regular meeting, we moved the budget for the public to go to the public and the public voted against it, basically. And, but we did bend the interlocal agreement, cost share center to a 50% of the budget split equally and 50% split by population. So.
Which will benefit Jefferson to a degree.
Yeah, I think it's mainly just a more equitable, fair. We're gonna revisit it again next year too, because it's still not where it probably should be. And then we're gonna, we're gonna meet this Wednesday and see how we can address the budget that did not pass.
It was one specific article, right?
It tied.
The whole budget really didn't pass.
Right.
It was one article that was challenged, but the way it was challenged, would have took all the money out of that one article instead of the budget as a whole, which would have made it near impossible to even function.
Um, I told Wayne after too, and I put you on the spot here, Wayne, but I, I just wanted to acknowledge how well Wayne spoke on behalf of the AOS board, but just on behalf of the district, I thought he spoke extremely well at that meeting. It wasn't, wasn't easy, easy place to be in. But again, thank you, Wayne. I thought you did a great job.
I think it's time for the jet.
Not yet. Yep.
And then Cat C, Todd, did you?
Yep, I went on the 20th. I'll talk about that when I do my report.
I will pass it off to you then.
All right.
Superintendent's report.
Jump right into it. Um, on December 9th, I attended the Midcoast Regional Curriculum Directors and Coordinators Meeting. As you're aware of, with the elimination of the Assistant Superintendent, that, that was pretty much what that person spent most of their time doing. So that's been a void. So obviously doing the best we can, building administrators have stepped up. Um, and I'm doing the best I can to bring to them whatever curriculum support they need. Uh, it's certainly a work in progress and be something that we continue to work on as we move forward. Let's see, what else? The, you mentioned the AOS public meeting on the 18th. Um, on the 19th, I attended the Midcoast Superintendent Association Meeting at Morse High School this time and had the opportunity to see the VATH career, Regional Career and Technical Center. A beautiful facility they got down there and campus down there. But as you know, our students here go to the Capital Area Tech Center. On the 20th, I was at the Capital Area Tech Center for their meeting and a nice facility up there as well. So our kids have some really good opportunities in this district to participate in those technical trades and really want to do a good job of promoting those for those students. So important stuff.
Cool. And then Janet, your principal's report?
Pretty short and sweet if we went right from Thanksgiving time into the holiday time, but congratulations to the basketball team. Basketball teams are really off their great start. I've been able to watch some of the games here at home, parts of the games. The girls are still five and one. Super talented, aggressive team out there. They've been really well, fun to watch. The boys are also playing very well. They have a 3-3 record the last I checked. Trying to complete some nice photos from Kathy Peabody, our athletic coordinator. So good job to the basketball team. Kindergarten 4-3 students, they did some sing-alongs at the Jefferson Green, which they always enjoy those visits. This year, our holiday lunch was on December 12th and lots of parents and guardians came in to enjoy that opportunity with their kiddos here at our school. That's always fun. I also wanted to just say that a lot of students, teachers, I want to make all the teachers, but especially in groups, several of them here. Jessie, Bridget, Heather, Rachel, others that worked on the Witch of Palooza. And a lot of fun activities for all the students to do during that holiday time. So I appreciate that. So I think the kids really enjoyed it and it is extra work with staff, which they enjoyed it as well. So thank you to all people. Parents came in, helped volunteer. I think that's when you were in the, one of the help issues. So thank you HelperL for coming in. So that was fun. And again, we are hit hard with needs for special education teachers and ed techs and support. And continue to work with our director, assistant director of special services, Kelly Soaks and Narsi Tomo. Worked a lot with Todd, reach out to universities, anyone I can think of to try to get some of the needs from that here at the school. So that's, you want me to talk about early release?
No, we got that. We got that. We got that later.
And I thought it was fun, kind of some of those pictures of Larry, our bus driver, Troy. Being Christmas, I mean, sorry, Santa in the fridge. And it was a broken down bus, right?
It is. It's sick.
It is. We're fixing it. What misinformation from the director of facilities here?
That turned out to be a blown hole on the turbo.
So no problem. Our, our, we just look okay now.
All right. Uh, do you have a finance report?
I can, I can do the, yep, I can, I can do it. And if you have any questions that I can't answer, then just send them to me or send them to myself and Peter and we'll make sure you get your answers. Um, the budget development calendar, that is something that we'll be actually discussing at the February meeting. So we will, uh, set a budget development workshop day and any accompanying timeline that will go along with that. If anyone has any thoughts or ideas you want to entertain prior to that meeting, just share them with us. Uh, the next one, the students, the student, the state tuition rates, we received some not so good news. The insured value, which, and this is all new to me with these tuition kids out to high schools. You have a tuition rate and then you have an insured value rate based on that tuition rate. And that rate has stayed at about 6.5% for, throughout the pandemic, I believe. Prior to that, I believe it was higher. We were, I guess we were notified, Peter was notified, but it wasn't really a, it wasn't a, how do I want to say it? It wasn't a big red flag or it wasn't a notice. It was, you know, put out there for everyone to see because I really didn't know about it until I started talking with our, our headmasters at our, our two sending schools, the academies that we said, that we tuition the kids into. But their insured value is a percentage of the tuition rate that we pay. So every year you have to budget and the, the, the difficult thing is it starts in September, but you don't find the rate out until now. So you budget on anticipating what that rate is gonna be. And as I said, it's been around six, 6%, 6.5%. Uh, when the state determined insured value rate came out, it was at 10%. So that is something that was not budgeted for. So Peter has gone through and recalculated your tuition lines. The secondary tuition line right now is over $42,000 in the red because of that adjustment. Now, he is gonna have to make a change on your encumbrances. You'll see some encumbrance numbers there that he also based on the tuition line recalculation. But he included four of our charter school students in that encumbrance line and we do not have to pay for them. So that will release $61,952 from what is identified as encumbered. So that money will be able to come out of that encumbered line. He has to, he didn't get to make the adjustment there. We were just talking about it today. So he will make that, that adjustment. But that is some news that we received that obviously was not great news.
So the state Department of Education, they're the ones that make this ruling.
Correct.
When do they determine what that rate is gonna be?
I'm not sure when they determine. I know we just found out, uh, three weeks ago is when we found out. I'm not sure when they actually sit down and do whatever they do to determine the number.
The superintendents of the school boards, we ought to consider a lot of the Department of Education on just how unfair.
The timeliness of it.
And unrealistic the type of practice is when schools have already built that budget.
Yep.
If they want to change it, they need to change it at the beginning of a fiscal year.
Yep. I can find out what they're.
It'd be the same as changing the tuition rate in the middle of the year.
Yep.
So is that solely completing competence on the Department of Education as far as I'm concerned for all these towns in such a position?
Yeah, it's not just general, it's everybody.
It's everybody. I think Peter said, uh, Peter said, please don't quote this in the paper, this amount, but I think Peter said it was something like an additional $250,000 for the district as a whole.
Well, it's completing competence on the Department of, Department of Education as far as I'm concerned.
I'll see what I can get as far as information as to why they have it set the way it is. And then the only other thing Peter had on here was your, your fiscal year 25 update, which is your financial statement right there. And if you have any specific questions about that, like I said, if I can't answer them, um, just send them to me or send them to Peter and I'll get answers for you. He said they're highlighted on there, but if you look at it, it's very difficult to tell what's highlighted because I asked him where in the budget those tuition lines were. They are darker on your sheets, but it's, it's just not a, yeah. Top of page two, and I believe some of the regular instruction might be part of that as well on page one. I believe it's those three lines, but definitely those three, those four lines, definitely those three lines at the top of page two. So that's where that money will be adjusted from.
So just kind of have the follows here exactly where we are in this budget. Come on the season, transfers.
Yep. So would you like, I mean, I can get a percentage of where we're. Yeah.
It would be nice to find out exactly where we are with all this.
And I think that'll be important as you go into your budget development process as well. So you're gonna need that. So I'll get that for you in February.
Thank you.
Sure.
Facilities report.
Uh, the, all the numbers ran, still have been paid for the bill out of the spec led room. So the total for that room was $43,000. So the rest of that money I would assume will go back into long term. Yeah, for the state, for the state there actually, yeah. So that's everything, all the bills have been paid, so that's done. The phone system, we have the field that's been cut. They've got the deposit, ordered the phones. It looks like the first holiday in January, which I think is March 4th.
Yeah.
I think it's the 20th. They're trying to set up the date to come in and install the phone system and get everything up and running that day. So hopefully we'll have that up and running.
That'll be a great improvement.
Till the phone line keep dropping out. The security system, we looked into it. I've got all the quotes. We came in at just under $26,000 to double off the front entrance and replace our badge access system with a more reliable, updated system. And we have much capital in the security capitalized line. And that's what we'll be using to do that. So I'll be doing the purchase ordering, getting that scheduled. That probably will be two or three months out by the time they get everything on hand and get ready to do the install. Uh, chip boiler is running great. And a can. So the disposal went in the kitchen and when they installed it originally, they put a disposal in that is non-reparable. So the bearings are gone in it. So we ended up having to buy a complete disposal unit for the $7,200. So that has been ordered and will be installed as soon as it arrives.
It's repairable?
Yeah.
Good call.
Well, you know, it's been the same once with 2011? Yeah. It's been okay. So normally you can take them out, take them by, change the bearings and it'll pull back together, but bearings are non-changing. That's it for me.
That's it for you. Thank you. And old business?
Yeah, this was the, uh, comment you made about the, the schedule change. I brought to this group before, I think, the fact that the way the schedule's set up now with board meetings, I have three, one week and two, the second week. And my suggestion is that we break those out. I'd like to make Tuesday, uh, not from February, but for the month of March, but make Tuesday a designated board meeting night. So I have one board meeting each week of the month. Tuesday is the best night because it's rarely impacted by holidays. School vacations, I may have to work around some of those, but at this point, I'd like to put Jefferson as the second Tuesday of the month. Unless someone, unless that provides any kind of conflict or anything with anybody, which means if we start in March, it would be the 11th of March. I'll give you an updated calendar once I go through and talk with all the other boards. I've already set Bristol as the fourth Tuesday of the month. Um, and this is the second group that I've had the opportunity to chat with. It's pretty close to where you meet now. So it's, I don't think it's that far off.
Make sure we let the PTA know because they send out that calendar.
Yeah, and it won't be for, it won't be for February. It'll be for March. And I will send out, I'll make sure it gets posted everywhere and I'll make sure you obviously get copies of that. That way it'll give us one meeting a week. If we have to reschedule because of weather or something, we don't have to wait an entire week to reschedule. We can reschedule later in that particular week. Um, it just provides, and to be honest with you, by the time I'm at a third board meeting in a week, it's, uh, I don't know if they're getting my A-game. So it'll give me an opportunity to focus on one board meeting each, each week and prepare solely for that meeting. So. That's it.
Okay. Um, new business budget discussion? Do you do that?
Nah, I think we covered that during the financial piece.
And then the tuition.
Tuition, you already covered that.
The policy for the IJOS.
Must have added it after we met.
Calendar change.
Yep. Um, the question was asked earlier about how, what are we doing for staff to provide them with supports as far as what was shared earlier with the, with the Aces and things of that nature. So I'm gonna look to you, Janet, to take it from here.
Exactly. I took my lead in. So some of the things that Zegar presented is it does. I lead in. So some of the things that Sedge presented is it does require changing and professional development for staff, mission and vision, core values, and we've begun some of that work through PBIS. But we really need some time to work on trauma-informed classrooms and specific de-escalation strategies and other things to work with staff. So I was requesting if we could have three early release days on Wednesday, January 29th, the first, February 5th and February 12th. To have the opportunity to have a chunk of time to work with staff, do some of the important work that you even put up tonight. We've done some of that work, like I said, in November when we had the day, the election day. We have professional development here in the school and there were two presentations on the trauma-informed, one for K4, one for grades five, eight, and also special education from John Woods, um, a presentation, but we, we really need more time to do so much work. And so that's my request to make to the board, to make those changes.
Our next workshop isn't scheduled till March.
It'd be 11:45 dismissal. So I could have opportunity to have lunch after that and then get started for a big chunk of time in the afternoon.
The board has to approve the calendar. So if there's an adjustment that's made to the calendar, it has to be the board that makes that kind of an adjustment. I can't do that.
So you're looking for a motion?
We make a motion to allow the three early release days.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Are other schools in the district going to be doing the same thing, do you know?
I don't know about that.
We'll be, we can talk about that Wednesday. We have, we have an admin team meeting Wednesday. Some schools, I think it's, different schools are, have different built, things built into their calendars, obviously as being an AOS, calendars are different from, from every school. And I would say it's, some schools are probably at different places of implementation of things like PBIS, so they may be a little bit further ahead. But I, I, I do think at this particular time, it's, it's something that's of value.
I think, I think with our, the culture, the way it is and what's happening within the schools, I can say from personal experience, 30 plus years early childhood education, burnout is a serious, real thing. I mean, I took a completely different career shift because it just, burnout's real. And I'm worried about our staff having to deal with these types of situations, worried about administration. So I got my support 100%.
The, and the other thing you mentioned, and you mentioned it, the other thing that we're seeing is there are fewer and few, there are going to be more people getting out of education, either from what you mentioned or retirement, because we're getting some, some getting to that age than there are coming in. We're actually going to take a group up to Farmington for their college, where they try to actively recruit seniors to, to the area. But other schools do that as well. So it's, it's a, it's a full room up there recruiting. But then Farmington told us, when I had a table there last year with my previous district, I think they said they had 50% fewer education majors than, than a few years ago.
I don't think they have any helping CE teachers that come to you anymore.
No, I don't think they do. Yep. I think they did tell me they had none last year. And even though I've told you, I still have my certification. Although, although you may be.
So kids will still get lunch on those days and then they'll be released and you'll let, I mean, like communications will just go out and blast everywhere.
We can't count as a school, we can't get reimbursed if we do freedom. That's it. And then your field trip.
So we didn't, we're going to, this month, we're going to reassemble our policy committee to look at this. We'll have our, so what I'm looking for tonight is a board member to be on the policy committee. If there's any volunteers to do so, Maria, that would be wonderful. Thank you, Maria, very much. And then Janet will find staff members, Heather.
You did get out of a speeding ticket, right?
And we'll, we'll reconvene with the policy committee and we'll get this policy ready for second read.
So we'll table it till February?
Yep. That's something that you guys are gonna have to, have to work out and hammer out. Yep, for sure. And a community member. You've been on it in the past, correct Sedge? And that's, that's a negative. So we'll, so we'll be looking for community, at least a community member to be a part of the policy committee as well. So if you guys know anybody that would be interested in doing that, have them, have them reach out to Janet. If you want a little bit of an insight as to how some of this stuff works. So thank you, Maria, very much. And then we can open it back up for public comment if anybody has anything that we've discussed. Of course.
So with Randy retiring, I would like to consider starting the search for another person as soon as possible. These days it's been taking months and months and recruiting to get. It may mean overlapping for a while. We've had four custodians on for a short time. But Randy will be off the entire month of July vacation wise and then come back and work a couple of days in August. So that'll be, that'll be done. So I'd like to look at starting the process of trying to find somebody to come in to be a custodian with the thought of that person eventually becoming the facilities person as well.
And I will tell you, you have competition just down the road because Noble Borough is in the exact same situation. I'm not saying, I'm not gonna respond to that, but.
I think that's probably all right financially. That must be doable. I would think because it has such staff shortages everywhere. It's probably in our best interest. There's gonna be some.
I think it probably is. Should be. Now, I'm not sure which cost center, making a lot of different cost centers, we may, but we may have to transfer. But yes, there's funds there.
There's also money in the sub-line to the top line.
I don't think, I don't think you need a motion. I think the board just giving you the thumbs up this one.
Then does anybody have any future board topics that they want for consideration for February, talking to the rest of the board? They want to see any presentations that they'd like to be, as you put together? Speak now or forever. All right. So we're gonna move into executive session. One MRSA 4056A, compensation of official appointees, employees. Can I have a motion? Second, all in favor? Thank you, guys.
Five, nothing.
Yep.
All right, I'm going to step up just one second.
Is there anything?